It is six o'clock and I'm gonna open the board of selectmen's meeting. If I can get a motion to waive-
Wait one second.
Clark, aye.
I was just gonna say. It's a short agenda, you wanna get outta here quick.
Yeah, we can get outta here by six thirty.
Clark, aye.
Binoid, aye.
Waitman, aye.
Aye.
Alright, before we get started, we're gonna do the pledge. Let's not run through this. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alright. We have approval of the treasury warrant twenty-two W eight and payroll twenty-two P W nine.
So moved.
Wait one second.
Do we have any discussion? Anyone?
Clark, aye.
Roll call.
Clark, aye.
Binoid, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye, excluding any COA wages. Alright, and next on the agenda, we have minutes, several sets.
To the chair, can we take them separately just because I think that there's-
There's different people attending.
Yeah.
Yep, so somebody wants to make the motions, we can go, um, starting with the fourteenth and then the eighteenth and then the twenty-first.
Um, wait, we'll make the motion to approve the meeting minutes from the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one joint meeting with FinCom.
Second.
Alright, any discussion, comments? Okay, uh, roll calls.
Binoid, aye.
Clark, abstain.
And Nichols, aye.
Sorry Skip, we're jumping all around now.
No, no, that's okay, you're doing fine, doing good.
Alright, next is the eighteenth.
Waitman will make- Waitman will make a motion to approve the October eighth meeting minutes of the select board.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Roll call.
Clark, aye.
Binoid, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye. And the twenty-first.
Waitman will make the motion to approve the select board meeting minutes for the October twenty-third, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call.
Abstain, I don't think I was there.
You weren't.
Yep. Binoid, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye. Awesome. Thank you. Look how easy that was. Nice young. Alright, um, and we have, uh, co- public comment, do we have anybody on for public comment, Tamika?
Nope, nobody.
Sure. Okay. I'm gonna whiz right through. Alright, no department heads, no petitions. And so I guess we'll write to Ron's report.
Mr. Chairman, briefly, as you know, uh, we had a joint, uh, select board finance meeting, we adopted pretty much every article that we had that went through, I think it went very, very well. Was pleased to see it, I made the modifications working with Tamika and I appreciate Tamika's work on, on taking the minutes so we could reflect those. I sent you back today, uh, what I hope is the final version with all the changes that, uh, the boards recommended that night, so I think we have a very good clean copy. The latest draft you have simply is taking off the word draft and, and respacing it some, but I think it's good, it's been reviewed once again by the town clerk and myself for accuracy and I feel it's in good shape. If anyone does see something wrong, please let me know so we can make the technical adjustment prior to it. There's a document in your folder tonight, uh, a warrant or a town meeting document, please make sure all of you sign it. Uh, there's a page so that, uh, she could have the warrant posted. Um, the only other thing I wanna mention is, you know, we had the, um, vote that said that the town would not support more than a two and a half percent increase to the school budget. Four of the five towns have now adopted that, we're just waiting on Paxton. That's only a, the timing issue, so that should be done quick. But I said, nobody, I know there's some consideration of doing letters and stuff, but, but the towns want to first to get together and figure out how they're gonna present that. So before anybody writes a letter or anything else, appreciate if you give us time for the five towns to get together and figure out how they wanna present, uh, what they did. And I'd be happy to work with, uh, Board of Selectment and Finance Committee if they wanna do something and figure out how we can move forward to make our own direct appeal as well as the group appeal, so we'll, we'll talk to you once I kinda know how that's gonna play out.
And was that all from select boards or select boards and finance?
All select boards, I know, but some of them, we're gonna bring them to the finance boards or I guess some people call them advisory committees. So it, it's definitely, definitely all select boards and maybe some finance committees as well or advisory committees as well.
So don't argue then to Thursday night.
Did you guys vote that yet?
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting yet.
Oh, it's Thursday night, okay.
Thank you.
So that's it, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm, we're good, it's been, the, the last couple of weeks have really been focusing on the warrant, I feel good about where we're at at this point.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Ron, is, is there a next scheduled meeting for, the next scheduled meetings for those two, um, district, which is a district, there's two different meetings, is there anything on the books?
Oh, for you mean the school, the regional school agreement meetings?
Yeah.
They have not seen them yet, I've not seen any emails come forward, so the answer is, nothing's come through yet. I'll let you know if it comes through.
Yeah, 'cause Lyndon and I-
'Cause you're gonna be the representative on that one?
Lyndon and I-
The two of you, yeah, I will let you, once it go on, I'll, I'll let you know when we have that.
Lyndon will be point, but if something, if you keep doing something on the back-
And frankly, I'll let you know both of them, plus if they do one with the, uh, town administrators and select board members again and talk about budget stuff, I'll make sure you're both invited for that as well.
Um, anything new on the sewer?
No, there's been no, no, nothing yet and we, we need to, I know Joe's been having some conversations, but nothing formal yet because we really gotta lock in the time period back for where they owe us money from backwards, that's gotta be all locked in. Uh, I think that the date has been the one that Joe has brought forward as to when we found out, it occurred when our engineering company found it out, but that has not locked down yet, so that's something that's still gonna work on, be worked on.
And then there was, um, on the appropriations, Article twenty-one on the leftover money from that Ford F- two fifty, you were supposed to check, Dan and you were supposed to coordinate and find out what the balance was or if there's money still, that was one of the ones that was missing off your list.
Yeah, I, I, I don't recall that, me and Joe talked about it, I think we did, but I don't remember what the responsible was. So let me check back with Joe on that, that was the Ford two fifty?
Yep, and then, uh, so forty-one thousand, one sixty-four was spent, but there was a balance and funds are supposed to go towards plow and equipment for that truck. And if there was a balance, then that's something we should've considered for that.
Yeah, 'cause we have that, we, yeah, we checked through and see there were various balances left. There's, there's an issue, there's two issues that's still gotta be, at some point we gotta deal with, right? So the first issue is the, uh, building money for the community center, they've agreed that, um, they'd be willing to give that money back and use it instead for repairs and me and the director of the COA has talked about maybe doing that in the summer, just trying to figure it out, maybe use it for siding and stuff, so we kinda wanna determine what repair we're gonna use that money for, that's one item. The secondary item is you're still seeing on the money for the charter and I, I'm not sure if the board came to a definitive conclusion that we're not gonna do, move forward with the charter, I know that we were all set with the council and we're gonna move forward. It became a debate and it just kinda, was kinda put on hold, so we gotta figure out if we're gonna spend money to develop a charter or we can use that money for something else.
We should put that on a future agenda, I, I don't think, we just haven't had a discussion, it just stopped, so, uh, we should, we'll add that to-
Okay, and I think it's a good debate, I think truthfully, I mean, I hate to give my opinion, I'll give you my opinion anyway. I think it makes sense to do a charter and frankly, I think it made sense to do a charter prior to doing the bylaw changes, but that's something the board has to make a decision on, not me, I did work out an agreement for the price because we were under budget a little bit and I got the council to agree to the amount of money we had in our budget, so we do need to talk about it and I'll talk to Beth and get it on the next agenda.
Um, well neither one's been done, even the bylaw changes haven't been done yet either, so.
Nope.
Um, so we can have that at a future discussion.
Yep.
So I guess my point was, you know, that that money, that if there is money left over, that was for plow, for plow and equipment, so I guess my question would've been, we should've looked at transferring that money for the equipment we have on-
Oh, you mean for the town meeting, yeah. But if it, if it's, if it's in the budget and it says for plow and equipment, Joe could still spend it for equipment.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so if there's money there, it, would it be appropriate to go towards that equipment, I would think.
I will check for it and see, but I, I don't, it's only, not very small dollars.
Whatever it is, we wanna close it out, we should go towards that, you guys, do you have a question Skip?
Nope. No, I was just agreeing with you.
Yeah, I'll check.
Thank you.
You know, it's funny, I looked at those, I was looking at those budget things today, you know, the Dino Make that I went to and I was thinking about the charter 'cause that was kinda the big issue left over there and I knew what we were thinking about with the billing stuff, but I didn't, forgot a lot about that truck issue, so I'll check at it and see.
Oh, sorry. Um, sorry if you gave it in your update, is there, is the, um, char- the Spectrum project moving forward after the meeting that we had and everything? That's progressing and-
It is, and I'm still arguing for more discussions, you know, but yes, it is moving forward. I may have better way to, to add to that, I sent you today sort of an update on the ARPA funds.
Uh-huh, I did see that.
So I sent that to you and you see the charter number in there with the two amounts?
Yeah.
But I, they, they were talking about still trying to help us, but have not gotten any conclusive amount of savings, but we're, I'm trying, still trying to push for savings 'cause I, I really didn't like the experience.
Yeah.
But, but that's where we are, we are gonna be, the ARPA committee's gonna be meeting again soon, one of the things we wanna look at is, um, uh, I gotta use it right now, I think it's called self-serve or safe serve.
Service aid.
Service aid.
Yeah.
Service aid, we're gonna be looking and spending a little bit of money to get a bunch of people certified so that we can provide food at the senior center and stuff, so that's one of the things that's on our next agenda, Joe's got some other projects we wanna look at, so we're still looking at items moving forward, but we haven't, the committee hasn't met yet to discuss them, so.
I actually have an email drafted, I'll try to send it later tonight of other potential ideas.
Okay, that's fine.
Just for the committee to-
Consider, we're happy to consider anyone's ideas, so if you have ideas, please bring them forward.
Okay. Anything else?
And I did post, I did post on the sign again today, the about looking for a member of the economic development commission. I'd like to bring you at least five members and right now I have four, so I'm still looking for one good quality candidate, at least bring five to start, we could have a seven member, but at least start with five. So, um, you know, if you guys reckon, have anybody, I did send the electronic sign, so hopefully we'll get somebody, but if not, then ask people that I think are good, maybe not whoever we want, but we, we need to get moving, we just can't let this thing drag.
I wouldn't wanna be that fifth one that's good that you don't really want.
Well, I don't wanna say I don't want them, but I'm looking for a certain type of candidate, but that's okay.
So if you see my name on the list, no worries.
There you go. Ooh, I maybe should've said that one.
Next, um, talking about the, uh, annual review for the town administrator. I guess we did find out that it actually, it was a year ago in October, so congratulations.
October twelfth, thank you.
So we're late.
Very surprised.
On the bus, but, uh, um, so we gotta figure out a schedule, um, Ron, we did talk about you just updating your, um, your accomplishments and addressing anything that we brought up in the, in the mid-year or something like that. So I don't know what kind of a timeframe you need on that, I mean, I know we have the town meeting and everything coming up, but I, you know, I wanna try to schedule something so we move along and get the-
Truthfully, now the town, last two weeks were really, really busy for me with town meeting, but now the town meeting, the documents pretty much said, I think I should be able to get to that within the next week or so, so it won't be too long.
Okay, so if you get that to us by the, you know, uh-
I think we tend to do the same at the end of the month, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I think is what we were-
So we have a meeting the fifteenth and the twenty-ninth, so do we think the twenty-ninth would be a good date to do the review?
Yes.
So, Ron will get us his information within the next week and then we would want to get the information in, probably, 'cause we're gonna review it and cons- and consolidate, right Carol, so do you, what do you think, is enough time to, just, we don't really-
I think it would be good to, if we can have it by the fifteenth, so another two weeks.
Okay, so if, if the board can have their comments in by the fifteenth and then we will have the review on the twenty-ninth, does that sound good with everyone?
And just looking back at our minutes, we had said the twenty-ninth is the review date.
Oh, so was that right on schedule?
Mr. Chairman, I wanna make one comment, I may have told you this, I just don't remember, so I wanna make sure. I, I think I told you at the last meeting, but maybe not 'cause of the timing of this, is that Representative Ferguson called me and she said to me, there's some potential money of ARPA funds through the state that we might be able to get for, and she says she was asked to give kind of her wish list as to what projects that her towns might have or her district have, and she said, oh, can, by the way, can you have it for me for tomorrow? Um, so I, I think I told you, Mr. Chairman, maybe Carol, I don't know about everybody, 'cause it was in the meeting. I put in, somewhere around a million two, I work with, with our DPW director, and put in money for repaving all the different town parking lots, and I mean town side only, not school side. So I'm hoping we get lucky with that and get some money from that, but I just wanted to, you know, that is something that we did apply for and hopefully if we're lucky, 'cause they got billions to spend, just not sure if they qualify for the ARPA money and we actually put a couple of other projects just in case it might qualify, if that doesn't qualify, but we did, working through our representative and through our state senator, we are looking to get some additional funds, hopefully it plays out.
Great. Thank you.
We're making every attempt to find money where we can, just so you know.
That's great. Um, so we're, we're good with the, the review? Alright. We're gonna review the motions and the votes and the motions, so we'll get that in our packet and say, right?
And that's been completely updated as of an hour or two ago, I sent you it. The, the, the earlier version would be fine, 'cause the only thing that was changed was taking the word draft off and spacing it, so it's the same version you had that I sent you a few days ago.
Any word from Dan as to when-
Not as of yet, no, I'll check with him tomorrow, but he, you know, I keep thinking it was every, any, any day and I, you're right, I said it, but I'll double check with him tomorrow and see if he has any news.
So I'm, so Ryan pulled this license, so that's not on the agenda anymore?
Correct.
Okay.
And when I, when I do that, I gotta calculate out the five percent of the first three lines that we're, we're looking at so that we can get a clarity. I think when you were talking about that number, I think you included the water sewer money, which goes into retained earnings, not that, when you calculated that seven hundred number, but take a relook at that again, 'cause I think you were adding that to that total. You weren't, so you were calculating something in those five percents, okay, didn't know which way you did it, but okay.
Okay, um, so I, I, does anybody have any comments on the motions or?
I don't have a vote down to this question.
I think, I think they're clean. We reviewed them over and over again, so. Carol, you got nothing for me? I'll make me feel really good if you didn't find any detective layers.
Well, actually, should we make a motion to sign it? Probably should, right?
Yeah, probably a good idea.
Yeah, so can I get a motion to, um, sign it, approve the, the warrant?
So moved.
Wait one second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Clark, aye.
Binoid, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye. Alright. Mass Humanities Grant Agreement, vote to accept grant.
So, Mr. Chairman, that is the grant for the Smithsonian project, uh, kudos to the three-hundredth anniversary committee and all the people. I know that I did a letter and I know that Board of Selectmen I think did a letter and others and, uh, we're fortunate to get that Smithsonian, um, project to come to our Rutland Library and kudos to Carrie. Um, so that is something exciting, that's a ten thousand dollar grant, uh, so we're voting to accept that grant as well, and there's matching amounts, but the matching amounts are gonna be like voluntary time and use the library and all that, so that's how we're gonna do that match, but we're really excited, uh, for this project to move forward.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank Leah for actually putting, um, working on that letter, and in the future, I, I, I'm, I was kinda in a hurry in signing it, but the, the entire board should sign those type of, uh, letters going forward, if that's- Does anybody have any questions regarding the, the agreement?
I just have one question, it's appropriate to have the check made, made payable to the Rutland three-hundredth anniversary committee?
No.
No, it's not appropriate, it should be made to the town.
So that's what the form-
The grant says it to them, and I'll talk about that, 'cause usually all grants have to be approved by you, accepted by you, but then we can put the money into account if we want. If that's where you wanna put the money, you should, um, vote to put the money, appropriate the money, uh, to that account and just put to a new account and Dan can figure out the account number and stuff.
Well, it's, it says almost otherwise stated and I'm not sure that I, it was otherwise stated.
Yeah, it probably, they're, they're not a, you know, none of the committees are designated to take money, so it all has to come through the town, we can, you guys can allocate money into accounts which they can spend, but it, it needs to come into a town account, so I'll have to look at that and see how that's drafted that grant.
And, and do, is it, you're signing the agreement, correct, or we, we give a motion?
Yeah, give me the authority to sign, it's usually the way it's done.
So if somebody makes a motion, if we can have correction in that.
If I, I agree, I mean, I think the only reason it could be this is just they wanna make sure that money is only being used for that, which, so I think we just need to make sure that-
It can be set in a separate gift account.
Right, that it's set up in the wording, that it's not just going to the general funders, you know, that it's like-
Yeah, that's why I say, that's why your motion would be set at that account.
Yeah.
And we'll put, the account will, you don't have to have an account number, 'cause there's no, the town account will put an account number to it in the trailer. And then just give me the authorization to sign for the approval of the grant.
Any other questions or comments? Any other motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to authorize Ron to sign the Mass Humanities Grant Agreement, um, for the, um, twenty-two, four-five dash two-one is the grant award number. Um, and this is for the Museum on Main Street partnership, um, with a note that, the, um, to work out the terms of payment location, um-
Develop a new account for the funds.
Develop a new account for-
And you're gonna allow the historical, uh, three-hundredth anniversary committee to control those funds?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, under the control, for control by the three-hundredth anniversary committee.
That's fine.
Did you get that?
Tamika will have it, she, she gets the gist, yeah.
Thank God. Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, any other discussion or comments?
I just wanted to say thanks to everybody that was involved in this, 'cause it was a, a huge undertaking in a short amount of time and everybody really came together to get it and it's huge, it's a big project and a lot of excitement, so, thank you all.
Great timing with the, with the three-hundredth celebration, so the timing was great.
So who's, who's guiding the three-hundredth commission on where they're spending the money and where it's going?
Well, so first and foremost is the grant itself is devised specifically for programs and stuff relating around the presentation, so, uh, the requirements in the grant-
No, that's not what I said, no, who's gonna guide the money? Who's controlling the money? The three-hundredth or the board of selectmen and?
So the three-hundredth anniversary committee, what they should do, if you give them the authority to spend the money, they should have actually votes of the three-hundredth anniversary committee that allocates money for different things, so the, the board, the three-hundredth anniversary committee itself should have recorded votes on record as to how they're gonna spend the money.
Okay, is that the way we wanna write this thing up, 'cause that's, I just have this awful feeling, alright?
I mean, they get-
Gotta have some, gotta, gotta be able to control what we're doing with this three-hundred day monies that everybody's just throwing at the town.
It's ten thousand dollars.
So my understanding is for this grant in particular, that's what we're talking about right now, is this grant in particular, and it's part of the agreement being awarded, it's kind of in part, in hand in hand with the, the Smithsonian Main Street to Maine or whatever, I forget the name of it, uh, Museum on Main, so the, it was a grant opportunity through Mass Humanities to go towards this program, so, to fund that program, so it pretty much by default has to go there.
Right, the program has its own guidelines, but I guess Skip's, Skip's concern is to make sure that they're following the guidelines of the agreement.
Man, I can work with them on that, you know, I mean, I, I don't have a big problem with it, but, but, um, I'm not overly worried, but we can, I can work with-
So I think, I mean, we, we just request that the town administrator review, um, the account on a regular basis to assure that it's a meeting agreement.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
How about other, how about other boards and commissions that have monies? What supervision do they have, you know, like I know Concom gets fees and everything and planning, um, I don't know.
They don't come through me, they handle, like the initiative account for planning, they handle, the planning board handles that and Concom handles that, doesn't come to me.
Right.
So, and it gets, it gets reviewed during budget season, but it doesn't come to me.
Karen?
Karen Norwood, one forty-nine Palmegusset Road, the difference is elected versus appointed.
But Concom is appointed.
Yeah.
But that's, that's the reason why, it's a fifty-three-
G account.
G account, so there's rules on that one, and that's why you've got them, and I know planning board, it's because it's, they, they're elected and all that, versus
Versus the bottom. This, this is a grant from like, like, just like when we get a state grant, like for the ambulance, so it has to be, make sure that it goes towards the ambulance and the supplies and then the guides of that,
Right. Right.
So it's handled that same way, it's just, this has a lot more component, moving components, so.
Right. Right, I, I mean, I understand skips, but I was just curious as to how other-
Well, why don't you do it this way, why don't you ask the board to report to you? To give you updates, uh, uh, reports as to how the money's being spent, or directly to the board of selectmen. I think the three-hundredth anniversary committee would be happy to provide those reports, so you guys could see exactly how the money's being spent.
I mean, and that's, I don't, I have, it's a pleasure, but-
Uh, that, that would be better, I'd look at that, I'm a little more comfortable with that.
I mean, I know that their meetings are, are open to the public also, so it's, and I think that they're, I'm not sure if they're online or not, but yeah, if we want to have periodic updates or-
So you wanna include that in your motion to the-
Well, I, I mean, just having the updates and, and seeing when the money, how the money's breaking down, because it's, we wanna assure that all the costs are covered anyway, because there are some matching funds that the town's responsible for, so that makes sense that we, we're all in line with
Yeah.
as it progresses.
They'll have to be meticulous.
No, we just, it just has, you know, peri- periodic updates, right.
They will, they will need, you know, there's, it's-
So your motion would include for the three-hundredth anniversary, you could provide periodic updates of how the grant is being spent to the board of selectmen or selectmen.
So just wanna amend.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to include-
To say what I just said, essentially, yeah.
For Tamika.
She gets it, she's neat of stuff.
I second the amend, amend.
Alright, any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Clark, aye.
Binoid, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye.
Uh, if I could, Tamika?
Mm-hmm.
Please make a copy of that and forward that article, that motion to the three-hundredth anniversary, so they're aware, tell what this is.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you say that the, um, bylaw catch stuff was poor.
They pulled.
Yes.
Okay, so the next thing on the agenda is Beth had brought this up, the, the class one, two, three license renewals for building inspections for garages and, and car dealerships, do you have a?
Yeah, I got a couple of comments, and then I think our building inspector's on the Zoom meeting to talk about it too. So, you know, Beth has gone over this with our building inspector and others, um, right now, when we do common VIX and different things, we have to have certain inspections. But this is inspectively, uh, small garages and small places that might sell a couple of cars, and from what I heard from Beth and the building inspector can remind more that they don't think there's any reason to be inspecting these small things and it just wastes the inspector's time to go out and do these inspections for these couple of small garages. Uh, so Beth, uh, there was a provision in an article some time ago, I don't remember what that date was, Mr. Chairman, if you remember, but there was a provision in an article some time ago that said for that year that they had to do inspections, but then it didn't really say they carried on, but the history is they just carried it on. I guess in, in the building inspector can speak more, I, I think they've determined that this, there really isn't a need for that inspection and through you, Mr. Chairman, if the building inspector can comment, he's on the Zoom meeting.
Yeah, I know Beth had pulled it out years ago and she had showed it to us when we discussed it, but, yeah, David, do you, do you wanna make comment?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, the, as far as Massachusetts goes, with the one-ten inspections, it's mostly for light safety of areas that involve assembly of people, educational, uh, large apartment buildings, um, places that serve alcohol. Uh, I find ironic to be finding myself in a garage that has one person working on a car, it has no access from the public. Uh, it just must've been a clause by the town itself for the reasoning for these inspections that I can't find and, uh, since there is no assembly of people or it's, there's nothing really to inspect.
Okay, what are you looking, that's in our packet, that-
It's the minutes from twenty-seven, October seventh, twenty sixteen.
Yeah, it's on the second page, there's like a, ooh, highlighted in black and colored.
I think that's what it was referring to, I just didn't know what it was.
It seems that it was supposed to be for twenty seventeen only.
That's what it looked like, but-
But I think it just kept going.
Oh, yeah, I agree, I, I'm not ignorant at that point.
Okay, okay. Okay.
I'm, no, no, I just-
Just pointing out that, that-
Just pointing out that that was done way back then.
You were there.
Yes, I was.
Yeah, you should remember twenty seventeen.
That's why I said it.
Alright, does anybody have any questions for Ron or David or Karen?
So if I, it looks like it's really at the purview of the board, and we have the note from Abby saying Holden does not currently inspect their dealership, but it's not uncommon for towns to require building inspections for used car lot to car repair facilities for safety reasons, so it seems like it's really at the discretion of the, the town.
Interestingly, if we had like a big car dealership or, you know, someplace that had a bunch of cars and people were coming to the site, I think I'd be more inclined to say, no, let's leave it alone, but since we don't have that kinda thing, it doesn't seem to make as much sense.
Well, Holden, Holden does.
No, there isn't, like, there's no waiting rooms, there's no access, the people will barely be in the buildings, there's, just, unless the town had something specific in mind at that point in time, I'd like to know what I, I should be looking for, if it's outside, just- No, there isn't, like, there's no waiting rooms, there's no access, the people will barely be in the buildings, there's just, unless the town had something specific in mind at that point in time, I'd like to know what I, I should be looking for, if it's outside, just regularly general public, uh, safety, I actually, exits, emergency lights, things like that, which don't seem to fall in this category.
I've got a question, would the board still, um, be ask, asking, um, the, for the car dealerships, the used car dealers, to bring their logbooks to confirm that they are still selling cars from the calendar year? I know in the previous, when it was discussed in twenty sixteen, it looks like that was a, an important part that the board at that time wanted to, um, ensure that the books were still able to be inspected or looked at on.
Well, it was, back then mainly, it was most to make sure they were still selling cars and not having a license without.
Right, so.
So, yeah, let's be real, I mean, I don't know, I.
I guess.
The, the book is, is odd, let's put it that way, I'll be nice about it.
I can make a suggestion if you'd like, Mr. Chairman, you could suggest that the only, uh, car dealerships that need to be inspected are those that, uh, are selling over twenty-five cars a year annually. Some number that, it means if they have a lot and they're expanding and doing a lot of cars where people come, then maybe you need to have an inspection, I don't know, I'm just trying to.
You're talking about for future use, 'cause, yeah, I don't think there's any kind of a dealer.
Yeah, for the future, yeah, there's nothing like it now, same, but if like a dealership did grow, and all of a sudden they were selling twenty-five, thirty cars a year and people were coming to the site, then you might wanna have the inspection, right? So you could throw in some threshold if you wanted to, and then we could reevaluate that, but at least you'd have a threshold to protect the town in case something happens, so we don't know, all right? It's a thought, I just, idea, I don't know if you wanna do it or not, but some suggestion.
Are we aware of any bylaw that this is attached to?
This.
The car dealerships?
I don't think this is a bylaw, Dave, you didn't say any bylaw on this, right? This is just a policy that must have been done by the board of selectmen at one point?
Uh, that's what I believe, I tried looking up any kind of inspection that would involve such a thing, and it stems back to nineteen seventy-two, as far as I can find, uh, but Beth tried looking it up and couldn't find anything either. Uh, if there's something the town wants me to inspect, uh, you'd have to let me know.
Does a threshold, David, of some type, make sense where it may become a business where customers are coming to that business, a, a threshold of twenty-five cars sales a year or something, is, is there some threshold that would make sense or no?
As far as light safety issues with the state, uh, as far as the state sees it, uh, no, um, it would depend on the town, there's no waiting area, most of these deal, deals are mostly done outside, or maybe just at the door, it seems, there is no waiting room, there's no business room, uh, Manns does have a waiting room which is inspected, and that's about it, that I know of in the town.
But I, I, I think what the town administrator is saying is should there be a building, a, a business that comes into town that opens up a larger dealership, where there may, there may be, you know, some kind of, you know, reason that we might want to, to inspect it if there is a waiting room, et cetera, so he's anticipating if, if it grows in the future.
Yeah, the only thing I know about, that I've seen about, uh, car, car dealerships and sell cars is usually the, the towns normally require like a yearly license fee to be new, uh, and that's about it.
Well, I, I mean, like I said, Holden doesn't do it, and they, they do have a large dealership, so I don't know how to, what it means after that.
Do it when my mouth is shut.
You can speak, Richard.
Yeah, Dick Williams Dobler, just to let you know, I, I do believe way back, I mean, you, you said something about seventy-two or something like that. In, uh, Mount Rutland, they had a problem with, uh, use, uh, dealer down here, burying a few things in the ground and, and a lot of waste oil and.
Well, I think when we had a discussion, that was my concern, is this an environmental issue, and you had said that that, that isn't the case, right, Ron, they're not going looking for environmental. David, is there any part of the inspection that would involve environmental for like waste, oil and fuel, et cetera?
Uh, that would fall under him anyway.
Yeah.
No?
It'd fall under D E P or something, if somebody made a complaint, I don't think it would fall under. Dave, you don't do any inspections for D E P or contaminants, do you?
Oils or contaminants or, or, uh, storage of that, that's kind of more of, along the lines of fire departments or, uh, materials can only be stored in certain quantities in certain locations. Um, that's not, I really go looking for, uh, that would be a fire department thing, mostly, but by notice that I would just pick up, but you'd have to have like four hundred and fifty or more gallons of like oil on site, or did storing oil and bringing it somewhere, maybe the town would wanna know about it, or, I don't know.
Yeah, that, I mean, that was my initial concern, whether it would be an environmental issue or not, but.
I'd like to suggest that we pause the licensing, not necessarily stop it, I, it sounds like there's a lot of, we don't know, going on here, and maybe we just need to revisit, what do we do annually and who does what, n- maybe it's just been in place for so long that we've, kind of, it's, it just keeps going as, you know, from twenty seventeen on, and so maybe it's just time to look at it again.
So a pause would mean what, a motion to.
Suspending it until, yeah.
Suspending, suspending.
Suspend the program until further notice.
Until, until we look at it further and.
So no inspections until further notice, that's fine. That's a plan.
On this, not on restaurants and.
Not just on this, but, no, this is just to deal with automotive dealers, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, 'cause I struggle a little bit to never, ever, ever have the buildings inspected, I think that they're, a lot of them are older buildings, and at some point may have the need for safety concerns or updates or something, but I don't necessarily know that every year is necessary, and so I'd just like to, to research a little bit more as to.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, part of that, we'll find out what the fire does and what police do, and what, what everybody's hearts are. And how often do we evaluate the businesses in town, and are they still in business, um, I think it'd be nice to look at it and just get things a little up to date.
Right, 'cause it sounds like.
Sure, I mean.
Yeah, 'cause it sounds like fire would still do the inspections, so there would still be some set of eyes on the buildings, but just if there is no building inspector eyes, then can there be a,
Right.
a broader, just keep your eyes?
Well, keep in mind that building inspector would be there if the building wanted to expand, let's say it was a dealership and they wanted that to do in addition, the building inspector would still have to go on site and stuff, so it's only if the site doesn't change, and if, and if certain contaminated products were brought onto the site, the fire department would be involved, and then if there was a spill, D E P would be involved, but the, the building inspector could still be involved if there's any expansion or any changes to the building structure.
Usually any oil containers that are stored in a building or oil barrels, uh, usually the fire department be aware, aware of this, if they should be on a, uh, it's a container tray, that if it does cause a leak, it would be caught.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I agree, I'd rather pause it and have a more in-depth conversation, even if it's, you know, getting them on a rotating basis, that, that, that they're inspected every other year, every three years or something, just so that there's some eyes on the buildings, but I think every year might be.
So I know someone wants to make a, a motion to suspend the requirement until, um, further reviewed by the select board at a later date.
Or should we just, say suspend for.
So moved.
Or do we wanna just suspend it for twenty twenty-two, and then make a note that we wanna discuss for beyond, except, I mean.
No, I just, no, let's, let's look into it, but suspend it for now and not put a date on anything.
Mm-hmm.
Because who knows who's gonna be here next in twenty twenty-two.
Right.
Okay.
So, did you make a motion?
Yes, I did.
Do I, did you get that, Tamika?
I got it, yeah.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? What, roll call?
Black eye.
The noise eye.
Waitman eye.
And nickel's eye. All right. Discussion appropriation transfer from reserve funds, go to approve transfers. So, actually, I talked to Karen about this, Karen has commented, and I believe I had sent, didn't I send you a copy of the form?
No, so, I got one from somebody else.
Previous. No, but when, didn't you ask me about this previously, about who transfers the reserve count?
Yeah. Um.
Okay.
Here is the form, that should be.
And it just has the finance.
And it's just the finance committee has.
Chair, and just the chair, right?
Uh, yeah, the chair assigns it with the date, and there is a mass general law that governs.
Is it different from the firm or the books, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
It's a, it's a different firm.
That's a transfer between two accounts.
Right.
Oh, okay, so there's a specific reserve fund transfer form?
Right, and it does go to the finance committee.
Yeah.
Do, do me a favor, if you would, just send me a copy of that form, 'cause I don't know if Beth didn't have it, or we just didn't, you know.
Um, I can't, because this doesn't allow me, 'cause I don't have rights, um, but they're there.
Okay. Okay, well, just, we'll just look for it.
I, I know I had looked it up at one point, I might have it wrong, I'll.
Yeah, if you send it to me, if we have it, just.
So this, this will have to go to the finance committee.
That's for the. Yep.
Does anybody have any questions, or?
I just, can we have it on our agenda at some point to look at the fees and at work with the boards and commissions for this, this is the Z B A concern, right, that we talked about in the FinCom meeting, is that?
So, what's happened is that the, because, oh, we saw on, the building inspector, uh, is putting more pressure on people, uh, to do things right, there's been more applications to the zoning board of appeals, which is increasing their amount of hearings, which is increasing the money they need for the fees for the newspaper advertisements, so this is, seriously, this is a good thing, and they were doing better at enforcing and making sure that they're following our, our requirements, so it's a good thing, but, you know, one of the things that myself and the finance board director has been talking about is, and, and I've technically actually talked with Mr. Sharet about it, is they need to readjust their fees to make it more appropriate. Uh, and in talking to the town accountant, there's two things that have to be done, Rick and the zoning board of appeals is working with David George, the town planner, to figure out what those should, fees should be. Those fees, once it's decided, they're gonna have to send that recommendation to the board of selectmen for you guys to adopt the new increased fees. Once you adopted those fees, those new increased fees will have to go to the general, uh, revenue accounts, uh, until town, annual town meeting, and then at annual town meeting, we could recreate a new fifty-three G account. Um, at the annual town meeting, and the fees can go in there, and then those fees could pay the existing bills, so, everybody's working on it, it's gonna go forward, uh, we just need to go through that process, it's, it's all in play.
I just wanted to make sure that it was in the process, if we needed to discuss it as a board before it got to us officially, or if it's.
No, you're gonna just vote on increased fees, just like you did your billing permit when we did increased fees for billing permits, same, same process that we did when we increased the fees. Rick is in the commission, they're gonna put together a plan to increase the fees, it'll come to you, you'll vote for them, they'll probably, usually make them effective at some time certain. Like last time, I think we did July first, 'cause we started the new year when we did the building inspector, but here we'd probably, because we're in November, we'd probably do it starting, I don't know, December or January first and start the new fees then.
Right.
Then we can adopt the new fifty-three G account in May or whenever we do the town meeting.
And just to be clear, we just wanna raise fees to cover the cost.
Just the cost.
So it's not like we're raising fees to have a surplus, it, it's.
Yeah, make money with it. Just so they could pay for the, mostly, it's just so they could pay for administrative work, which is, some of it would be in terms of Tamika's work in the minutes, and the other part of it would be the newspaper advertisements, those are two of the biggest costs involved.
I just wanted to be clear to anybody. I just wanted to be clear to the public that it was not like we're looking to make a whole lot of money off of it, it's too.
No, this is just pays the existing bills, that's all. Right now, we're frankly subsidizing those, those developers or whoever's going to that account, we don't wanna do that.
I just wanna note, I'd like to see the math, I don't wanna just see figures, um, either before or after, I wanna, I wanna see what the real cost is, and then what we're doing the, the fees up to, so.
Well. I, I, the reason I'm stumbling is 'cause I think it's kind of guess, because you don't know how many hearings you're gonna have or what the costs are gonna be, so you don't know, uh, what the fees are gonna be, or what the newspaper ads are gonna be, so it's really a guesstimate, I don't see.
But every person has a.
The paper fee is a fixed fee.
The fee is fixed.
The newspaper fee is a fixed fee.
Correct.
Yeah, so that we can get it.
Yeah, so that amount I can happen if we give you.
Yep.
But we won't know how many newspaper ads, 'cause we don't know how many hearings are gonna be, and we don't know how much time you're gonna put in, 'cause we don't know how long the hearings are gonna be, so most of it's gonna be.
We.
But when you still charge like X number of dollars per, per, if somebody's coming in with an application, then you can say, we're estimating, you know, typically these, this, you know, the hearings last X number of out, you know, however,
Yeah. That's true.
and have a little bit of a guesstimate, so it shouldn't, I mean, it shouldn't be.
Well, that's what the board would do, yeah.
I realize that there's some bigger pieces, but the fees, I think it should, shouldn't be as difficult as, I don't know.
You know, I, can I try to detail that on those forms, and I now know that those are not the right forms, but I try to explain how you got the app, like how we got to that number, and, you know, 'cause there is the fixed fee of the application, uh, excuse me, believe and notice, like, that's the same amount of time.
How you got to that.
Right.
Hmm.
I, I just don't wanna be put in a position where we're underballing it again, you know, I, it's, I know it's a fine, fine balance, but, um,
Yeah.
I'm not questioning anything, I just wanna know.
Well, I mean, I'm. Yeah.
That, I.
Again, my, what's the cost of doing the business?
Right.
Well, that, as you say, that's something that the zoning board of appeals needs to figure out when they give you guys the fee structure.
Yeah.
Right, so your, your board will discuss it, and you're gonna get an edge, you're gonna make an educated guess and come up with a number, and we're gonna base it on.
It should be a.
Yeah, same.
We have a meeting, we have a meeting on November tenth, and that is on the agenda to discuss that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So your discussion will, will be the explanation of where you arrive at the fee?
Yes.
So, that's, hopefully that should be suffice.
Yeah.
I know, it sounds so.
I know, I just wanna make sure that we're not undercutting ourselves again and having to come back in six months to be like, oh, guess what, these, we're still not where we should be, but I don't wanna be having a huge excess either, so I know it's a fine balance, and we might have to tweak it
Right. These fees, yeah. Yeah.
in a year or something, but.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, and I, and I do think that there's a discrepancy in the fees, um, in the respect that sometimes the exact same amount of work and the cost goes into something, but we're not cutting the same amount. So I think we're maybe undercutting ourselves in one situation, and we're not in the other, so that's definitely something we have to work out.
Okay.
So certainly a step in the right direction.
Yes.
And we'll address a, a current, you know, obvious problem, so.
Yep, and thanks for all the work you've been doing on it, you know, it's been ongoing.
So we're good on, on that, and then, uh, next on the agenda is to discuss possible action on the, the Department of Conservation Recreation Grant.
Mr. Chairman, just a question, if I could.
Yeah.
Do we, and I was told the history was, and maybe Karen explained something differently, I was told the history that while it's, the reserve fund is controlled by the finance committee, that in the past, the board of selectmen have been, have voted on those transfers, so, are we going forward, or are we gonna not have the board of selectmen vote on them, 'cause it is, you're, you're absolutely right, it's finance committee who controls reserve, but I think what, what the history was, from what I was told, was it was the selectmen knowing what was going on and saying they generally agree with the transfer, but that's up to you guys, how you guys wanna do it.
Right. I don't think the form has, is the only signature line, I believe, on the form is the finance committee, but we'll take a look at that.
Well, whatever way you guys wanna go, I, I just, that, I think the, the history, the way it was spelled out to me is that the select board has reviewed this and voted on it, but you guys, you know, the, some of the members have been here longer, would probably know that better than me.
I definitely remember being approving refund, right, reserve fund transfers in the past, I didn't realize that it was FinCom that has the ultimate authority in that, but I do think it's nice to have the,
Authority, yeah.
to Skip's point earlier, a second set of eyes just on everything, but I, I think our weight will impact what FinCom's decision is, but I think it's, I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Correct.
Just.
Right, and, and I would assume we get copies of the approvals anyway, the transfers, just so that we see that the, the reserve funds are being transferred. I'll try to find that form, like I said, I don't, I don't recall there being another signature.
There isn't, it's the finance committee, because the select board, you guys could vote on it all you want, but you don't have it, and it doesn't hold any water.
That's true. Just a recommendation.
And we've never been told what that recommendation is, if there's been ever, all those years that we've gotten it, we've never ever been told what the recommendation is, so. You and I have both been doing this for a long time, and we've never received that, so appropriation transfers, it's both.
Right.
Right.
If I may, through the chair, to FinCom, I don't know that we did reserve fund transfers this past year, because I think we were doing inter, inter-account, inter-account transfers, but I know in the past, we have done reserve fund. So you don't, FinCom never sees the, this, with the select board's signature, you've always used that other form, I don't know how it worked, 'cause we've always seen this form.
That form is transferring between two accounts.
Right, not from reserve.
That's two accounts, reserve is a completely separate apart, we have our own law that covers us for the reserve fund.
And so in the past, when it's been reserve funds, and we've, and the select board has voted on it, you, FinCom has always used the, the reserve fund form, or has it been on this form?
It's never been on that form, it's always been on the reserve fund form, and I don't, we've never been, in all the years I've been doing this, too many, um, we've never been told that you guys have ever voted on them.
Okay. Okay.
We've never gotten your opinions, none of that, we've always had that conversation, we've always fought for that through ourselves, so.
Okay.
So if I may, how do I get access to the correct form to, to then provide to the finance committee? That's what, that was.
Well, that's why I, I don't know if we have it or not have it, because this is the form that Beth grabbed. Well, that's why I, I don't know if we have it or not have it, because this is the form that Beth grabbed, but it may be in her record, she probably just didn't know it. So we, we probably have that form, I just don't, yeah, what's that?
Yeah, I imagine Laura would have had it, right? I would think Laura would have had it if you.
Well, that's what I say, it's, it's probably in the council, we just gotta look for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm gonna dig back to see if I have an old email from, it'd be old, but I don't think the form's ever changed, but I'll see if I can find something, but. I know I found at least one that was processed, um, in a discussion quite a while ago, you asked me about the reserve funds.
I do think it's good to know that you guys know the amount that's being transferred from the reserve account to the, to whatever account it is. I think that's something, that's probably why it comes to you, is just so you can.
Right, well, we're probably involved in the actual request and it goes for approval to the, you know, we, we're the ones that are trying to resolve this account.
Right.
I was gonna say, sir, I don't know how it norm, I think in the past, it's been, like, department has, I don't know, can't remember if it's come through us. Skip, do you remember have, I feel like we've been involved in reserve funds, but is it because we've, they've come through us to authorize it to go to FinCom?
They came to us and we suggested to them.
Okay.
Not, they didn't say yes, we didn't say you've got to, no, we didn't do that.
No, and I wasn't ever thinking that, that our vote saying yes was that they absolutely have to, I figured it's the same discussion that we have when it comes to budget time anyway. So I just couldn't remember was kind of coming through the select board and saying, yes, this needs to go to FinCom to be looked at. Um, and then FinCom does whatever they want? Or if we are voting and saying, yes, this should be paid and FinCom should, so I, I don't remember the specifics of the motions and everything that we've.
I don't ever remember making a motion saying it should be paid, I don't remember that.
Right.
But we'll, we'll get the correct form and make sure it's completed.
But I do appreciate being involved somehow in the, the know, knowledge of what's being asked, why and everything.
I, I, I think that the, the committee keeps us informed regardless of the money that's being transferred and stuff.
I make sure too, that when, when my departments have a transfer request, I make sure you guys get a copy, even if you don't wanna vote on them, I don't care. Just so you guys are informed, it doesn't make a difference if you vote or not, but I want you guys to know, because something might come up, it's a big issue.
Right, we need to be aware of what the balance in the reserve is. All right, any other discussion? All right, so we're gonna go to, as I said, the Conservation and Recreation Grant? One you wanna? This is the one from the, um, camps, isn't it?
Oh, okay, now I know what you're talking about. This was kind of a little of a surprise to me. So State Senator, State Representative put in for fifty thousand on a grant to do the repairs or whatever changes to the prison camp we're gonna be. Truthfully, it's on state property, so my original thought was that they were gonna get the grant, it would go to the state because it's on state property. And between the senator, rep and the state, they would work out what was gonna be done. The email I got, we got kind of this email from, lack of a better term, a bureaucrat within Department of Revenue, saying that the grant was coming to the Historical Commission. Just kinda like the other grant, I said, well, they can't do that, it's gotta come for the board of selectmen to approve the grant and then have me sign it. And then we'll allocate the money in the historical account. So that was, that was kinda my first thing, is saying, no, we just can't give a grant to Peter and Peter's not the one that signs off on all this. It's gotta come through my office and through the board of selectmen. Anyway, I had conversations, email conversation with Senator Govey, who did inform me that she felt more comfortable with this grant being administered to the Historical Commission. Because it was the Department of Conservation, it wanted to tear down those walls. So I said, okay, and they said, but I don't know how we, as a town, can go in and just start working on town, on state property, how does that work? And she said, leave that to me. So, they're like, okay, I, you know, if, if you work, if you're gonna play that role of how it's gonna work with the state, that's fine by me. Just the board will accept the, the grant of fifty thousand dollars, we'll allocate it into a Historical Commission account. The Historical Commission, in that theory, under the grant, they could do whatever they want as it relates to this prison camp issue. They would have to decide that, but in order to do any of that work, they're gonna have to get state approval. That, that's kind of where it was left to me, but that wasn't the way I thought this was gonna play out, but that is the way it's playing out according to the state senate. And I appreciate her getting the money, it's just, it's just a weird process, I've never got money to do something on somebody else's property before, so it was, it was different. But I understand why she says she's comfortable that way, but that's where we are. So I guess from you, if you're okay with it, I need you to give me authority to accept the grant and to establish an account for the Historical Commission, uh, to be able to utilize this money to save the prison camp, I don't know.
Preserve.
Preserve the prison camp, yeah.
I think.
Whatever you wanna describe it, right. Now, I think means signs, it's not just preserve it, but to put up signs and, you know, as I say, to preserve and other incidental specs around the prison camp. Because I think they're talking about, you know, putting up historical signs or kiosses or something, I don't know exactly what they're gonna do. Hey, Peter, I talked to Peter and he couldn't make it tonight, but he wasn't sure what they were gonna do yet either, he was kinda surprised by the whole thing as well.
Dick, do you have?
Yeah, so I'm on the Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee and unfortunately, I sent a list of different items that I wanted to talk about, but they still canceled the meeting. One of them was, I would like the prison camp to be transferred to the DCR State Park, not watershed. Therefore, you know, have the ability for people, for them to take care of it, for people to use it as recreation and not watershed. And, um, I finally got a note back to contact Jennifer Stowe, so, uh, I'll be doing that in the future.
Truthfully, one of the concerns I have when I went out to look at that, been out to the side a couple of times to look at it, let's assume that they repaint the walls, because there's all graffiti everywhere. If they repaint the walls, they're just creating a new canvas, so unless they enforce this thing, the kids are gonna go back there and repaint it. So I think it's gonna be very difficult without enforcement to do anything practical. I think the educational components, like kiosk stuff are fine. But when you take walls like that and a place like that and you clean them up and paint them, like I say, you're giving them a whole new, you know, design to do, you know? So I don't know how the state's gonna define and protect that once it's developed, but.
And they were doing that anyways, I mean, not the state, but the people that were doing the graffiti would go in there and wet wash it and set paint and all get over again.
I was gonna say, I think that there's, if I may, through the chair, I think there's a group that does kind of the artistic graffiti and anytime there's any hate graffiti or anything, I think generally, they try to get in there fairly quickly. It's kind of their own group, and it's not perfect by any means, but I think giving us some control to go in there and clean up and put some markers and everything is huge. And then just provide that piece of education, it's not perfect, but it's.
Yeah, like I say, I went there and there was this huge, I don't know if it's the devil or not, but it was something like a devil thing, it was this giant portrait of the thing. It was just, it was nothing of any of that graffiti, it looked artistic to me, it looked like, you know, kids just throwing whatever they wanted against the wall, so. It'd be, it would be one thing if it was some artistic stuff.
Well, it's still public property, so it's, it's illegal to do regardless of you.
It's illegal to do whatever, right?
Yeah, it's a criminal offense.
Yep.
Okay, um, so do, wanna get a motion to accept the grant?
I, I still have, I, we have until June thirtieth to do this all, that, that it ends on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. That's not much time to, especially if we're at the point where nobody, we don't know what we're doing yet, um.
See, they gotta plan it, they gotta, once they plan what they wanna do, they also gotta get approval from the state to do it, so.
But I'm not, does that mean, sorry, does it mean that it means the project needs to be completed by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two?
Money, usually the money has to be spent by that day.
Be, I know it's fiscal, it's because it's a fiscal year and it was in this past fiscal year's budget, so that's why it was.
I'm pretty sure that's. I'd also just, I, I, I found something on Facebook about a young man that did, uh, he took his drone out and he also, he, he videoed it, it's up on YouTube. It's about a twenty minute video, it's of the prison camps, it's really great, it, it, to, we might be able to incorporate his talent.
I would say give any of your suggestions to the historical, because they, because as far as Peter said, he didn't, he was surprised that he was in charge of it.
For something. Yeah.
And they had no plan as of yet, so anything, suggestions that citizens or board members might have, I would say bring it to the Historical Commission for their consideration.
Is this, are you accepting this on behalf of?
Again, like you did, and the other thing would be giving the town administrator the authority to sign the grant application, to accept the grant and to work with the town accountant to establish an account, uh, for the Historical Commission, uh, so they can spend these funds on the prison camp.
I'll make that motion.
Do we also wanna include the same oversight that we did for the three members to be consistent?
Uh, and ask them to report to you?
Yeah, I think, I think to be consistent, to provide periodic updates, you know, through the town administrator, the board or to the board.
To the board of selectmen. To the board of selectmen, I think they should.
So you're amending your motion and, and Tamika's trying to keep up with you?
Yeah, amend. Yeah.
And do you amend your second?
Yes, I amend my second and me first and.
And you had a discussion? All right, roll call?
Black eye.
Benoid eye.
Waitman eye.
All right, um, just before we move on, just, just to note that there was some recognition that the town was on, the senior center was recognized, um, on the twentieth when we had our last meeting. They had some kind, at an event, the Alzheimer's Association had an event over at the Milford to, uh, recognize the efforts that were made in the walk that the, that the town did. So they provided a certificate, um, to, to the council on aging. And also the VAC team is gonna be recognized on the tenth.
That is, that's okay.
Um, for, by the, um, what are they being recognized?
They'll be recognized by the Chamber of Commerce, by the Chamber of Commerce because of the great job they did in the region, providing vaccines across the region.
Chamber of Commerce and.
So which is the Chamber of Commerce?
So kudos, kudos to all, uh, people involved in those two events. And just, I wanna thank the police and fire for their, um, the Halloween event that they had for the kids as well, it's well appreciated. Anybody else have anything else that I'm missing, I don't wanna miss anybody? All right, um, Economic Development Plan Committee, you had mentioned you're looking for another member, nothing new on that?
No, correct. No, we're trying to get that committee, commission established and you say we got four members, we need one more and once we do, I'll bring it to you for approval.
Okay, anybody have any con, uh, con, comments or questions regarding the committee? Uh, website updates?
Yeah, we're just building, uh, electronic files of different contracts and stuff to put on our site, um. But we still gotta, I think Carol was scheduling a meeting soon of that committee, so we can pick up.
Yeah, we wanted to wait till after we were done with.
Yeah, let's get through town meeting too and get through it, but we need to get back engaged in that.
Okay, boards and commissions, um, anything, well, I, I know that obviously with Mitch going, we had a couple of vacancies.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, economic division at ConCom.
I was wondering if there could be an update, because I think RDIC might have an opening and ConCom and CIPC, and I'm not sure. And then obviously the economic development that we're trying to start, and I'm not sure if there's any others that are not fully seated. And I don't, nothing else is coming to my head.
Can we get an update on the board?
Yeah, I gotta look at the list, I know she has a list of that stuff.
And maybe if you just put it kind of in our news and announcements on the webpage, you know, ways to get involved or, or some, I don't know necessarily email class, but.
Yeah, we, we should put a push to get some, to get some more involvement from other town members for some of these. Because like you said, there must be a fair amount of vacancies right now, so it'd be a good time to.
And had you had a chance, if I may, Ron, to reach out to CMRPC or MMA or anything about doing the facilitated, um, boards and commissions, department head?
We have not reached out to them, frankly, the last couple of weeks have been all about town meetings.
Kind of retreat type thing. Okay. That's fine, I just wasn't sure, I figured it had been.
I haven't done any of that part of it yet, no. Um, frankly, I, I have no problem frankly, you're talking about the big, big meeting you were talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind, I can facilitate some smaller things. I've had a couple of meetings involve boards and commission members just to talk about, uh, I think we did ethics and we did.
Robert Tools.
Uh, but Karen, I think we did.
Robert Tools.
Robert Tools, we did. So we've done some, some boards and commissions, uh, just to kind of update and do provide some training. And I could think about another one of those, because I, I mean frankly, I think what we really wanna hear is, I, I think actually the boards and commissions kinda wanna hear what other boards and commissions do, what other things happen at town, so I could.
Right, this is, this is more of an informational, like, uh, to.
Right.
I can do something like that, it won't be the skill of CMRPC, but I can create something like that myself.
I mean, I've heard from various boards and commissions that kind of would like a, something a little bit more formal and, and with, kind of facilitated neutrally, so it's.
Okay, let me see what CMRPC.
So you could, so you do like breakout groups and things like that and, and address certain issues and involve all boards and committees?
Correct.
So, yeah, we, we had talked about it, it was almost, might even be like a full day type event.
Right. I mean, I know it's a lot to ask and it would obviously be whoever can make, you know, a strong encouragement, but not mandatory participation. But I think it could be really beneficial for, um, progress forward in the town as a whole, just to get everybody on, at least understanding what everybody else is doing and some overall goals and objectives of the town as a whole.
Yeah. Now the town meeting's over, let me see what I can do, I'll give a call, say everything like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
At least a bulk of the town meeting's over.
All right, uh, human resources, we talked about the TA's review.
Yeah, all of our staff members are pretty much full at this time, so we, we are, we're in pretty good shape. We have the three water guys that are all in various parts of learning, uh, so, um, the company is still, uh, managing the, the water department, the oversight. But that frankly, should go away a lot faster than we expected to, so that's good. The only, well, we have one, I think I told you, one dispatcher that's gonna be leaving, we're gonna be filling with a dispatcher that's coming in. But that's basically, all of our positions are in pretty good shape at the moment.
And you've talked with, um, department heads about reviewing a meeting with staff and discussing.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do annual reviews, I'm gonna have to schedule that for departments to do some kind of review on each of their employees.
And I specifically, if any con, uh, contracts come up, I think I'm gonna make sure that a full review's been done before any renewals come up.
Okay.
Um.
So the only one I know we have coming up with that is the communications director, that contract's coming up, so we can do that one prior to the.
Okay, and then, and going back, like, I, I know in the past, um, Anita's also had, MMA will do free classes for certain, um, things like on ethics and things like that. I know she typically will set things up like that.
Yeah, she sets that up through, yeah, she's, yeah, actually, there's a requirement to the ethics, I think everybody has to do an ethics thing once a year, I think. That, yeah, that's taken care by the town board extra power.
Okay. Any other questions regarding human resources? Oh, I had something, oh, man. Um, I know we met briefly, we haven't really gone too far as far as, um, meeting with the annual budget and, um, financial futures. We had that brief meeting, um, what, what, where, we, we could just, I thought we kinda got sidetracked with the town meeting coming up and everything like that. But we're still gonna pursue that and start having meetings again after the town meeting, is that okay?
We will have, um, on Wednesday, Carol and I will be finishing, um, the list and getting all the backup for the, um, for any of the questions that the finance committee had.
So we can do a joint meeting after the town meeting, is that okay, like on a Thursday or something, if that works for you guys, if you wanna discuss it and, so is it?
I'm sure it won't be a problem, but yeah, I'll ask.
So is the plan is to provide me with questions prior to the joint meeting that I could get answers for, is that the plan?
Um, actually, I got a detailed expense budget from Dan, so it gives us the warrant number, the voucher number, vendor, everything, so.
Is that different than the one that Becky provided you?
And that is something. This one's got all the details. It's got all the details and it is something that you can print from the system.
I thought, Becky told me she already gave you that though, so you're saying it's something.
The one that we had that night was not detailed, this is seventy-five pages of details.
Okay.
And, um, and then we remembered to schedule a meeting for the board of selectmen before the town meeting, so we'll meet at five thirty, is that agreeable?
And it's at Clunwood, right?
Huh?
It's at Clunwood, right?
Yes, it's at Clunwood. And just to remind everybody that, uh, special town meeting's on the eighteenth at six o'clock. And I wanna thank Beth for the cookies, I didn't have one yet. Anybody?
There's one for you two, so make sure you get it from him.
Oh, I thought they were for me. Anybody have anything else? You get a motion?
Sure.
Second?
Wait a second, stop.
Roll call?
Black eye.
Benoid eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye.
Thank you.